Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council and the Sacramento Housing Authority will come to order. Would the Clerk call the roll, please, to establish a quorum?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Kaplan, Councilmember Tao, Mayor Protam Talamontes, Councilmember Valenzuela, Vice Mayor Maple, Councilmember Guetta, Councilmember Dennings, Councilmember Vang, and Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Councilmember Kaplan, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
Please rise, acknowledge, and acknowledge that in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwin-Win Toon peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Please remain standing. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, universal, and universal for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Good afternoon to everyone. We have the afternoon meeting of the Housing Authority where the City Council sits concurrently and as the Housing Authority, and then at 5:00, of course, we have the afternoon-evening council meeting and a closed session in between. But let us begin with some very important items. Begin with a consent calendar. Are there questions? Are there comments? Are there conjectures? What's that?
You don't have a consent.
What am I looking at? Okay, well, on my agenda, it said consent calendar. Items 1 and 2, so.
There was some mix-up.
Okay, there might have been a mix-up here. No problem. We'll get right to the discussion calendar, having dispensed with the consent calendar.[146.16][146.16](Laughter). And let's take item 3. Go ahead. Item 1, this is the tax equity hearing. Go ahead. This is what I...
He's got short timers.
I'm reading what's on my agenda, but please go right ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Whitney Hinton, Program Manager with SHRA. Staff is requesting approval to hold a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act or TEP for Hearing for the issuance of taxes and bonds by California Municipal Finance Authority, CMFA, for the 69th Street Apartments. SHRA, acting as the Housing Authority, is the primary issuer of mortgage revenue bonds for affordable housing developments within the city of Sacramento. In limited situations, SHRA's multifamily lending policies and mortgage revenue bond policies permit alternative unit issuers, excuse me. As a reminder, bonds provide below-market rate financing for qualified affordable housing projects. Due to timing, CMFA, not SHRA, will be the bond issuer for this project. SHRA will have no local oversight to monitor the project nor the ability to conduct compliance visits, investigate residents' concerns, or enforce property management replacement if needed. In late March, the developer for this project, CRP Affordable Housing and Community Development, reached out to SHRA regarding issuing mortgage revenue bonds after they received $26 million award from the state's multifamily housing program and infrastructure infield grant programs. Unfortunately, California Debt Limit Allocation Committee, or SITLAC, the entity that oversees bonds for the state, now only has two bond applications per year, one in April and another in August. SHRA staff did not have enough time to write a report and receive approval from City Council and the Housing Authority with such short notice, so we agreed to an issuer that does not require similar noticing and hearing. This is the second time this year this has happened, therefore, staff is currently investigating other options with bond counsel that will allow staff the ability to proceed with bond inducements on short notice while still receiving governing body approval. If a solution can be found, we will return with our recommendation in the coming months. 69th Street Apartments is a 130-unit affordable housing development proposed on 1.4-acre lot at the corner of Folsom Boulevard and 69th Street. The project will have 1, 2, and 3-bedroom units for residents earning between 30% and 60% of area median income. Project-based vouchers were awarded to 60 of the units and will be reserved for homeless households. Amenities on-site will include school-age play structure, a community room with a full kitchen, a computer room, a lobby, a lounge area, a laundry room, resident service offices, and 72 covered parking spaces. A pool was not included due to the lack of space. Currently, there are two businesses operating on the property, Taqueria Santos Laguna and Hyperthrive Athletics. These businesses will receive relocation benefits according to their approved relocation plan. Again, the developer is CRP Affordable Housing and Community Development. This will be their first project in the Sacramento region. They are also working on a project in Elk Grove. SHRA has approved John Stewart Company as the property management company. Lifesteps will be the resident service provider for all residents. CRP has committed to providing 10 hours of after-school programming. In addition, Lifesteps will provide three full-time case managers to serve the 60 homeless households. In closing, staff is requesting approval to hold a TEP for Hearing for this project, and staff and developer are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Do we have any public testimony on the item on the project?
I have no public comments on this item.
Members, I got Councilmember Guetta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity here. Very excited about this project. It brings me back to 2002, when, back then, two young individuals, myself and also Dr. Luke Wood, were student leaders at Sac State, and we lobbied the City Council to redevelop this area for housing.
What became of either of you?
I have no idea, you know, but, you know, and that particular site was one of the areas where we talked about the safety and how we needed more housing, and particularly affordable housing, and that area actually has developed quite a fair bit. Most of it has been market-rate housing, though, and what we needed, though, was more affordable housing. For those that have gone to Sac State and know some of the housing availability in the area, there is one other family-style housing that's affordable housing, subsidized housing, that had serviced a lot of the students on the campus. So I'm very excited about moving this project forward, but I do have some concerns and conditions here, so I'd like the developer to please come up here, because I'm excited that, one, that they're working in Elk Grove, but they're also here on this campus. So there's 130 units, and, you know, Sac State has a FTE of 25,000, but 32,000 head count, so out of those 32,000 students, I'm pretty sure there are at least 130 students that could meet the conditions of the 30% AMI for homeless, the 30% AMI extremely low income, the 50% AMI very low income, and 60% AMI, and one management unit, obviously, you know, maybe they are a graduate of the Business School of Finance and Management there as well. But what I would like as a condition here, and I want to hear from the developer, is that as part of the recruitment process, and I don't know the process of how you look at applicants, but we do have a lot of families that attend Sac State and are part of, they use the subsidized childcare and have to do extreme, you know, things like an hour-and-a-half of bus rides just to try to get on campus and then manage their childcare options. I think this is great that it'll have a playground and those amenities for that success, but is the applicant willing, as part of this application, to work with the university? And I've contacted the President's Office already, and they're ready to sit down and meet, to look at the recruitment process through the campus, because what we do want to do is encourage people to come through the property, get an education, being able to benefit from that subsidized housing, and it's close to transit, there's a grocery store, you know, there is an elementary school nearby. It has got all the pieces that a working-class family that's low-income needs to succeed. So question to the applicant, will you work with the university to recruit as part of that? And I know we can't condition who is allowed in there, but we can condition, we can agree to, is how your recruitment process goes.
Well, I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Gregory Nestler. I'm from CRP Affordable, so thank you guys all for considering the project. To answer your question, we're happy to have those discussions and to meet with the school and to work with them to make sure that we have the people who can benefit the most living in our project. As you mentioned, there's a lot of great amenities there, so we think it's a perfect place for families to live, and we're happy to have those conversations.
Very good, very good. Now, are there any, is there a reason why you would not work to recruit from the campus and those low-income families? Because I remember being in that FAS, the Financial Aid Student Line, and it was a pretty long line, you know?
There's no particular reason. We just need to make sure that we comply with all the different regulations and rules, so as long as we comply, we're happy to meet those requirements.
That's exact, that is what I wanted to hear. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And with that, you know, Madam Vice Mayor, I'd like to open and close the public hearing. I'm excited that you're going to be providing housing in the area there, and again, it's the fact that we can provide also affordable housing to many working families, and the average age on the campus is much higher, and there's a lot of returning students. My mother joined the campus at 50 years old there, and so it never is too late to start, and definitely was a, from a farm-working individual to that. So with that, I'd like to open and close the public hearing and move the item. Madam Chair.
I do have a second. All right, you have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstained? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
And since we are talking about Sac State, I forgot to mention I want to acknowledge their win against Nicholas State at 37 to 7.
Thank you guys for the time.
duly noted. All right. Thank you so much. Moving on to item number 2. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair and members of the Housing Authority Board. My name is Vicki Smith. I'm a management analyst with SHRA. And the report before you requests authority to sell parcels in the Del Paso Nuevo project area that remained after the final phase of street improvements for the project were completed. We have a short, very short video to show you, just to give some background for folks that may not be familiar, and this video is only about little over 2 minutes long. There's no narration or sound, but just take a quick peek at some photos. Good, thank you. If you could put the PowerPoint up now. So as you hopefully saw in the video, the project was awarded a homeownership zone designation by HUD in 1997. That's the wrong one. Sorry. Yeah, that one. 1997, the project was awarded a homeownership zone designation by HUD and received over $10 million to seed money for the project. And like it said in the video, the goal was 300 single-family homes. We actually were able to do 325 single-family homes, and those were developed in six phases. 51% of the units were sold to low-income families. In addition, the two parks and detention basin and the other related infrastructure were also completed. So this is a map of the overall project phasing, and the phase that we're talking about today is Phase 6. So in Phase 6, the, after the street improvements were finished, there were these eight small remnant parcels, remainder parcels, that remained in the ownership of the Housing Authority after the final homes were completed and sold. And those are on Fran Barker, Louise Williams, Albergini, and Johnny Morris Avenue. And all of these properties are really too small or have other obstructions, or they're sized wrong, and they just really aren't suitable for affordable housing development. So staff conducted outreach to the property owners in the area to see if they'd be interested in taking ownership of the little remainder parcels, and the majority indicated that they So we are now seeking authorization to sell these Housing Authority-owned properties to the adjacent owners. Those will be sold at fair market value, and upon your approval, we will take all required steps to make that happen with the goal of having the properties sold and subdivided by early 2025. That concludes the presentation, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Tao, why don't you start us here at your district?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First off, I would just like to say, great job to staff at SHRA on, you know, finishing the project. I know this has been a long, ongoing housing project, affordable housing project in our district. A lot of members from, you know, the community were able to buy their first home through these developments, first-time homebuyer program, and Phase 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 were allowed a lot of people to move from Del Paso Heights or from Strawberry Manors who were renting to be first-time homebuyer, first-time homeowners, and create that generational wealth for their families. And, you know, this is a very unique development, you know, because it really highlights what Del Paso Heights is, are, and was in the past, you know? Streets like Fran Barker, who used to be an advocate for Del Paso Heights, also worked for the city of Sacramento, Louise Williams, who's a staunch advocate for Strawberry Manor, Johnny Morris, Albergini, Coach Albergini, who coached for 30, 40 years at Grant High School, Jimmy Pope, and other streets, names that were named after icons of Del Paso Heights. And so it's really, you know, and so I've spoken to some, most of the residents who will be happy to take ownership of this litter of land, and again, I was told that this litter of land was too small to develop or do anything of significance, not even enough to build a community garden, and so I feel that, you know, having the property owners take owner of it so they can manage it, control it, and also take care of the property would really assist with the ongoing maintenance that SHRA and the city has for this land. And so with that, I would like to open and close the public hearing and move the item.
I'll second. I do have two speakers on this item.
Take them, please.
I have two speakers, Gordon Liu and then Kay Harris.
Good afternoon, Council. Good, Mayor. My name's Gordon Liu. I'm the current District 2 Park Commissioner, and I want to speak about these parcels. These parcels are not, these remnants are not, these remnant parcels, they are not remnant parcels, they are planting strips, and they're used for the anesthetics of the neighborhood. They add value to the neighborhood environmentally, curb appeal, privacy, mental health, and bird habitats. These planting strips are a way for the city to increase its urban forest within this neighborhood. There are existing trees and small shrubs within most of the planting strips already. $13,000 is a small investment into the neighborhood's urban forest. We need more of these spaces within our neighborhoods, not less. Selling off these spaces is a direct conflict to the urban forest plan. The SUFP aligns with the 2040 general plan. ERC-3.2 tree canopy expansion, a 35% increase by 2045, prioritizing tree plantings and the tree maintenance in areas with the lowest average canopy cover, and explore strategies to reduce barriers to tree planting in disadvantaged communities. Maintaining and keeping these planting strips will add to this goal. I urge you to invest in District 2's tree canopy and maintain these areas for the betterment of its residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kay Harris, and I'm not sure of the last name.
My name is Keisha Harris, and I'm a resident of District 4, but I want to concur with the last speaker with these particular parcels in District 2. I did attend the Sacramento Housing and Re-Development Agency Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I voiced my concern there as well, and so I came to do the same today. I also want to encourage environmental stewardship in these areas for the parcels that are looking to be sold off. Not all of the parcels are wanting or needed, not all of the parcels are going to homeowners who live in the community, and I'm asking that we consider those parcels going to residents and business, small community-based organizations in the area as well. I was able to drive through this past Sunday, and I have pictures. I don't know if that you'll be able to see them, but we're talking about sizable plots of land that you can absolutely create a community garden, natural habitat, just open green space, the tree canopy that was discussed before, and I just encourage that we take that into consideration today. If not, I ask that we open up the discussion for other parcels that are available within District 2 and 4, and the other districts that are in the community that are sitting underutilized, they're sitting vacant, and they can absolutely be refurbished to benefit the community for the reasons that were listed before, and with a special emphasis on mental health. Green space is important, being outdoors is important, and if we're providing this space for the community, that only helps all of us with the other issues and concerns that we have within the community. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you for your comments. Speakers.
Thank you very much. I see Councilmember Tao still, or did you have another comment, sir? Okay, I got Councilmember Guetta, then.
Thank you, Mayor. First, you know, one, I wanted to also thank, you know, the staff for the work on this. This has been a long time coming. It's been a project that we've been seeing for, I think, since I started on the council. But I did have, you know, one concern and one question, but I'm willing to support the council member's motion here, and I'm not sure if you opened and closed the public hearing already, but I'll go ahead and second it if it hasn't been seconded. But I think the constituents make a good point here in the, when we have remnant parcels, and while SHRA is trying to manage its costs, you know, for maintenance, there are amenities that we're losing, and I don't think that enough of that was done in consideration. Some of these areas, to, as one mentioned, as one of the testimonies mentioned, could be large enough for trees, and in fact, it does have trees. Most of these are small enough that they don't. They, they're, you know, less than .03, .04 acres, and so those, they may not be suitable for a public tree. And at least to, at least for the concerns about tree canopy, any tree removal would still have to go through the city's tree ordinance as well, but I feel like there was a missed opportunity here in our Public Works Department and others thinking about the challenges that suburban communities face when we're looking at ride shareables and those amenities. When you go to other communities, you'll see, in fact, I miss the e-bikes, but you'll see a lot of scooters all over the place. They're, they're blocking the sidewalks, and we don't have a number of locations to be able to do ride shareables. So I think there could have been, these could have been spots and plots to figure out how to expand those service areas, and I'd like to just put that on the table so that when we do look at, at remnant spaces, are there other departments that could say, hey, you know, this actually might work for a, you know, a public bike rack? We added public bike racks on 21st Avenue, and that's where you see a lot of ride shareables get dropped off and put on there naturally. And so I wanted to, you know, put that on the record because I think it's important that even though SHRA is a separate JPA, when we look at any other future remnants of parcels, that we be looking at them for all amenities for the public. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and support the motion, but I do have those, I think, concerns about future missed opportunities. And then I know, I think Mr. Tao had actually requested a list of all the ROSA properties as well in his district, but I'd like to get a list of all the ROSA properties that we have in the city of Sacramento. Thank you.
And I did want to mention that we did reach out to the city about the parcels, and we could try again, but it wasn't really within the capacity of the Public Works Department at the time, is what I was told, so.
Understood. Thank you. And then that message was clearly for our Public Works Department, too. Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions, comments? Very good. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained. It passes, 9-0. Thank you. Let's move now to item 3, which is the Marina Vista-Alder Grove item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Mark Hamilton. I am a Director in our Public Housing Department at SHRA. I'm here to provide an update on the community Wi-Fi project at the Marina Vista and Alder Grove public housing communities. First and foremost, this project could not have been done without the support of the city of Sacramento, the efforts of our SHRA property management and maintenance teams, Lea Todd of Floyd Elementary, and our contractor, Federated Wireless. I did want to especially recognize Julius Austin, who's with me today, who's been essential on this project on the SHRA side, and Mr. Prasad Rumpali, who is a retired intel professional who originally approached SHRA for the pilot for this project. He helped to lead our project through its original pilot implementation and has provided additional tech guidance on the current iteration of the project. Also, we'd like to thank Manny Martinez from the city's IT Department, who's worked with us hand-in-hand as we've kind of gone through the process of building and implementing the Wi-Fi project here. So really, the goal of this project was to provide free access to high-speed internet to these communities and partners of the Marina Vista and Alder Grove communities for at least five years. SHRA, in partnership with the city of Sacramento, were able to utilize local funds in the amount of $1.4 million to support this project. So originally, we had a couple of questions, so, you know, what led us to agreeing to do this project, and what was the motivation? And to answer that, there are two very important terms to be aware of. The first is the concept of the digital divide, and the second is that of digital inclusion. The digital divide is the gap between individuals, households, businesses, and geographic areas at different socioeconomic levels with regard to both their opportunities to access information and communication technology, and their use of the internet for a wide variety of activities. This gap very much exists at these two. This gap very much exists at these two properties as most families make substantially less than the average median income for the area. Digital inclusion is defined as the activities necessary to ensure that all individuals in communities, including the most disadvantaged, have access to and use of information and communication technologies. This project is one of those activities necessary to help bridge that digital divide between two of our largest affordable housing communities. The most prominent display of this divide was seen through, throughout the COVID-19 global pandemic when this project was originally conceived. It was discovered through the pilot process on this project that twenty-five percent of the children on the property who, who were utilizing remote learning were being dropped out of their classes due to a lack of internet connectivity or low bandwidth. Our partners at the school were doing everything that they could to support their students, our students, including issuing hotspots. However, the need for service rapidly exceeded the capacity of those hotspots, resulting in children continuing to be dropped out of their classes. We introduced the pilot project at Marina Vista in 2021, utilizing a group of twenty-five students to evaluate the potential use of the Federal Communication Commission's release of the Band Forty-Eight Citizens Broadband Radio Service, or CBRS, as the potential method of delivering large-area Wi-Fi to the community. The results of this pilot were very promising. As detailed in the staff report, ninety percent of the users found that the solution was as simple to use as normal Wi-Fi, and ninety-three percent would recommend the use to their friends and neighbors. There were two results, however, that came back that we substantially wanted to improve upon. Eighty-five percent said the connection made doing work, daily work easier, and eighty-seven percent said the connection was better than their home Wi-Fi. When we were looking at the scale implementation of this project, we looked to partner with Federated Wireless, who was and is an expert in this space. We tasked them with these following requirements in regards to the project. We had to, one, maintain or exceed the, the sense of satisfaction with the use of this system. Two, we had to make the system easier to use and more comparable to standard Wi-Fi without any additional equipment needed by the end user. We had to, three, improve the speed and reliability of the service to be provided to the family. Four, any hardware or technology should not impact the resident's utility billing or their living space. And five, we wanted to provide all of these services, including maintaining these systems for a period of no less than five years. So that leads us to where we are now on the project. As of June 2024, a vast majority of the primary technology for the project has been installed. We had a few bumps that we had to work through with Preservation, who were gracious enough to, to work with us as we were looking to kind of add twenty-first century technology to properties originally from the nineteen forties. So throughout June, July, August, and to date, we've been working with the Federated team to conduct connectivity tests throughout the properties to ensure that there is a strong and stable connection throughout the properties. And we expect these to be done before the end of the year. We are continuing to work with our partners, both with the city of Sacramento, with Federated and our S H R A teams to make sure that we are thoroughly testing this, this project and its implementation before we launch it. So we'll be organizing different working groups on the properties consisting of different demographics, from our staff to elderly, to family, to school-aged children, so on and so forth. At this time, I'd like to invite Julius up, if you would, to read a letter from Sam Floyd, who is the principal of Leotard Floyd, in regards to this project.
Thank you, Mike. Hello, everyone. Principal Floyd wrote, during the pandemic, we saw an increased need for internet access amongst our students at Leotard Floyd Elementary. Through our community partners at S H R A, Valley Vision, Future Tech, and others, we provided internet access to families in need. According to Pew Research Center, forty-three percent of lower-income families do not have access to internet. That statistic generally mirrored our school population. Our community partners saw this inequity and piloted a program to bring broadband access to our community. This pilot, through this pilot, students could access the internet to learn during the pandemic. Of course, there were some hiccups. Yet, the pilot showed the potential of bringing broadband services to both Marina Vista and Alder Grove. Access to the internet is an important factor when we look at social mobility. Bringing broadband services to the community will only help families by providing resources to negate inequalities that poverty produces. With gratitude, Mayu Sam Floyd, Principal Leotard Floyd Elementary School.
Thank you, Julius. And we do have a quick video for you guys, if we could have that queued up.
The world is changing now. Access to information really does draw the line between the haves and the have-nots.
I grew up across the street. I felt like I had a family.
Need to do more.
This school and this community, there's something special about it. We have been talking internet, technology, laptops for kids for a good ten years. It started with just trying to get our kids some one-to-one devices. And then we ran into the issue of internet at home. We were tasked with sending three hundred and fifty laptops home with kids. The access piece became the challenge, and then COVID.
I think the pandemic really highlighted the inequity that was already there, and broadband was a big part of that, you know, once classes moved online, when work moved online, when everything said, oh, it's okay, just look it up if you need to enroll in food stamps. And didn't fully connect the fact that there's whole sections of our community that either because of lack of infrastructure or cost, didn't have access to that resource.
The community is served by cable, and they haven't stepped up to the plate. So when Prasad came and asked about 5G, we thought, oh, cool. We can, we can start to use a new technology here.
Back in January of 2020, essentially enabled one hundred and fifty megahertz of free spectrum. You can easily blanket one square mile with an outdoor cellular radio.
The project that they're working on right now is installing the radio so that we can provide high-speed internet to Marina Vista.
The teachers have become really comfortable, and the kids have really learned some skills that are going to help them transition to the new technology that we're all using.
The minute schools closed, Food Literacy Center thought, well, our solution is that we could now possibly offer virtual class. We've gotten them addicted to vegetables, and they still want to keep eating healthy at home. They're kindergartners. They might have lost the recipe. Well, if they have internet, they can get online and they can find that same recipe that they cooked in their food literacy class, and they can make it with their families.
You know, the ultimate goal is to give the students the skills, but to help increase their learning outcomes. And I think those things have happened over time.
Today, when we actually saw the system working very well, when we had all six or eight kids doing what they typically do, and they were saying, oh, this is working very nice. It was very gratifying. Whatever you worked on is actually has shown results.
We are seeing very good results. We are getting good feedback. And in some cases, we are seeing a speed of hundred megabits per second, which is phenomenal.
I am grateful for everybody that has made it possible for our kids being able to get 5G without any hassle. And hopefully, this is just the start. This is like a pilot, not just for our community. Hopefully, it takes off to other communities that also need it.
People who care about this issue are all over, and you want them to have a role in developing the technology that's going to serve the future.
This neighborhood has been ready for this type of attention and investment for a while. I'm excited about what this means, not just for this neighborhood, but for other neighborhoods in Sacramento and around the state.
This is a technology pebble that's being dropped into a pond. And the ramifications of the ripple effects, I think, are going to be national.
We are committed to making digital equity a cornerstone of our inclusive economic development strategy, and we're backing it up with real dollars. We spent millions of dollars of our CARES Act funding to help our school kids during the pandemic. Those kids, our kids, deserve the same access to technology as kids from any other part of the city. Councilmember Valenzuela and S H R A and everybody, really. It, it's what it's all about. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, some people make good ideas really easy. And I remember when this first came to me, I was like, obviously, we would want to do this. But, I mean, for folks to remember, I mean, initially, this pilot was reaching only a couple hundred households. It was not neighborhood-wide. And this kid, this district, this area, is, like, that elementary school that's named after Sam's mom is one hundred percent public housing kids. It is completely segregated from the community around it. And so you have all of these kids that are going to the school that don't have infrastructure, don't have access, then going home to a neighborhood directly next door that doesn't have infrastructure, doesn't have access. And I have to invoke a certain name because it was a tragedy that really led to us getting this money, right? It was the death of seven-year-old Isabel Martin. And I really want her story to be included in this as we move forward because had it not been for that tragedy, had it not been for that community meeting, that LaChelle and the mayor and I went to with our police lieutenant, and it was just the four of us, and there were fifty people in that room, a good chunk of them school staff, who said, we need you to do more, city of Sacramento. I'm sorry, we need more. We need more consistency. We need more investment. That led to me asking and the mayor granting us two point five million out of our ARPA money. And we've been able to use that to stretch, like, we have year-round programming at that school now with the Y. We have after-school stuff going on with street soccer and ball-out academy. I mean, we were even able to use a portion of this money to help get South Side Park Pool financing over the finish line when that pool went down, and none of the kids in the neighborhood had access to a pool. So they started breaking into the private pools in the nearby area, which you can imagine was not going well. So we were able to stretch it, but, I mean, this asked from S H R A to say, you know what? If you just, we were able to get just a little bit of this two point five million, we could make this a five-year program. We could make sure every single household in this area has access to broadband. It was just incredible. And so we're on the cusp of launching this, and our city team has been working with you. And we just got to celebrate AT&amp;T just donated a bunch of laptops to the kids. And we were there on, was that Thursday or Wednesday, celebrating them and all of the partnerships that really made it happen. But I just want to center these kids, and I really want to center Isabel in this story because it was a tragedy that led her to lose her life, but it was also, I think, the wake-up call that our city needed to really pay attention to this special, special community and to partner with S H R A and all of these incredible partners to make this, to make this happen. So, and I want a copy of that video, please. I haven't seen it yet. You almost made me cry up here. That was beautiful. But yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, LaChelle, and your amazing team. I think it was, like, yeah, this exceeds my expectations for the impact we could have had in this area in just a short amount of time. So really want to just thank everybody.
Oh, my. I just. I just want to talk about this all day and night. But let's at least take a few minutes. I got a couple additional things I want to, I want to say, but Councilmember Kaplan, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody's leadership that made this happen. I was still a school board member when the pandemic hit in Natomas Unified. And I can tell you, I think we all saw the stories of the kids who were at Taco Bell looking for internet. And I know collectively in our region, we were like, not our kids. And how can we make that change? One thing I can tell you that I hope as we move forward, because I know Natomas Unified doesn't need to be the only one where we can look and ask, because Sac City, I think, is passing a bond, and Twin Rivers has some infrastructure money in Robla, we used in Natomas Unified some of our ARPA funds and put an antenna on every single one of our schools. So there is actually a free internet within a mile of every one of our schools. And so that is kind of quote-unquote meets the item of a facility so that bond funds can be used. So how can we take what was done here and done in some other areas and look at expanding it so that is no, no one district or no one school has to kind of go out and it be one by one? How do we do this in partnership? So I see this, and I just see the potential and the possibilities because this is about partnership. And it is something that I have, I've actually personally done a scholarship for fifteen years on Chromebook Scholarship for our unhoused children in Natomas Unified because the digital divide and having access to internet and computers is baseline for their future nowadays. So I want to take, like Mayor said, how do we take this story and this positivity and make it so that there is equity and that digital equity with every school site that we have within the city of Sacramento? Just a thought and a vision and a larger thing, but I think that there are partnerships that can be had with our local school districts on making this happen more.
Mayor Proton.
You know, having broadband access is almost as essential as having electricity and having water and having a toilet that flushes. It's so important for all our kids. So I just want to uplift my colleague, Councilmember Valenzuela, and LaChelle and the team for, like, making it happen. These projects aren't easy, and it requires constant focus, determination, and just plugging away at it. Once you get the answer is no, you keep going at it until you get the answer is yes. And so just thank you so much for the work that you have done to get our kids connected and making their lives better.
Gratitude, really, Councilmember Valenzuela, Katie and S H R A and everybody in the community and the school for insisting that these children matter. And I'm haunted by, both haunted and inspired by your reference to Isabel Martin. And the fact that it, and I'm, I'm inspired and bothered by the fact that we were able to put almost eighty percent of our ARPA money into our community because of the will of, of the city council and the prior, and the prior city council. And that was one-time money. And it begs the question, which I'm going to speak a lot about on Thursday morning. Now I got to rewrite some of my speech. Now what? Now what? Because there are a lot of communities like this. And it's not just broadband. Broadband is the happy example here. There's so much more around equity and inclusion. It's our work, and it's the work of the future council and the leadership of this city. Thank you. It's great. Okay. We move on now to item number four. Is that a, we don't need a vote, that was a presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mario, our Assistant City Manager. Before I turn it over to Brian and Tim, who will take you through the formal presentation, I just wanted to take a moment to make a brief remarks. I wanted to say thank you, first and foremost, to the city, county, S S F, Continuum of Care, S H R A staff that meet, staff and leadership, really, that meet on a weekly, monthly, as-needed basis to problem-solve. You know, but more importantly, to the staff, both the city and county staff who are on the ground, boots on the ground, the field staff who are out there on a daily basis, day in, day out, providing outreach and services to the unsheltered community. You know, the partnership, the city-county partnership agreement, which we're going to talk about here in a minute, is a foundation for all of our collaborative efforts in dealing with one of the most complex problems that I've dealt with in my public service career, the issue of homelessness. It's in, it's, it's in, the landscape keeps changing. It's dynamic. The city-county partnership agreement provides a foundation for the collaboration that we're, we're doing. It doesn't encompass all of the efforts of all of the agencies. It, it is a work in progress. It's not perfect by any means. But we continue to work on it. I think the data that we'll present this, this afternoon shows that we're making a positive impact. But there's a lot more to be, we're learning from that data, and there's a lot more work ahead. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian and Tim, who will take you through the formal presentation. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Brian Pedro, Director for the Department of Community Response. Today, I am providing the six-month update for the city-county partnership. Today, I am providing the six-month update for the city-county partnership agreement in addressing our homelessness. A little spoiler alert I'll put up front is that we are all green on all areas. So we haven't met all the requirements. I did want to speak a little bit on the agreement itself. As Assistant City Manager said, it is a platform for us to work off of. I think it was a really good base, and it, it was that, that strategic plan that got us some objectives to hit, putting a plan in place, and going out and doing that plan, and then getting back some feedback out of that to see if we can be better, how we can do better. And I really feel like we're at the point that we are now getting enough data from the time that we've been in this where we can start making some adjustments. And, and we are constantly, we meet weekly on both our end and then our field staff to figure out how we can improve our numbers and provide a better, more effective approach to this. So that being said, let's see where we're at here. So when we provided this six months ago, we did break it out into four categories. For consistency on this, we did break it out into those same four categories: outreach services, shelter housing, training, and information. And as you will see, we went with the red, yellow, and green dots again to determine, red, obviously not being met, yellow still in progress, and green has been fully met the requirement. With this in the outreach category, last time we looked at this, we hadn't fully hired the 15 CalAim workers. So that was part of our team that wasn't fully established. It was, they were hired in full almost immediately after we did our last six-month report. And with that, what we have done as a city is we're deploying out our teams. And these teams, we've broken into five regions in the city. The teams make up DCR staff, HOPE outreach workers, Community Health Works, CalAim workers, and our behavioral health team, and then some impact officers. And so there's about a team of 12 in each district out there every day, providing services and really working as teams in each district and communicating with each other. We also have on here, the encampment team will engage in 20 large encampments. Since we have changed our dynamics out in our field, it's changed a little bit. And we, we don't have 20 large encampments to hit every month. We sway in between 15 to 20, depending on if we focus on rapid teams. Our coordinateds get a little bigger, but we've knocked that down. And with that, we had to change our model a little bit on how to engage our community and still keep our, our services up. That green is really reflecting. All right, so if we could see that, it would show all the services that we've provided during this period. Looking at the top, essentially, we've gone to, in the last six months, 6,339 unique locations within the city, serving 2,000, 235 individuals, and providing a total of 43,904 services. So those services are all of our teams providing all the services that we have. So we have coordinated access referrals. We have providing, getting together to get vital documents, simple as an ID card, social security card, providing food services and clothing and hygiene care. And this number of services that we provided this six months versus last was, our last one was 20,052. So we've over-doubled the services that we're providing out there. Kudos to all of our teams that are, I feel like we're really getting our feet underneath us and really working as a team, trying to not only provide services, but, but making some movement out there. Speaking of services, of course, we have our four core centers within the city. We have our Crib Center on, that's WellSpace Health on Seventh and H. We have a Crisis Respite Center, Wotton Folsom. And then Tim will, the county will speak about our behavioral health outpatient treatments, our FSPs. Again, we have the CalAim Enhanced Care Management that the Community Health Works is providing. And we'll, we'll talk about the services. There's, there's so many services out that we have out there right now. And again, the county will speak on, on those that we are providing. Shelter and housing, we've met our 12-month 200-bed sites, and we're on track for the 200 shelter beds within 36 months. We finalized our affordable housing plan previously. And then, of course, additional funding, we're looking at, waiting daily to see if we received our encampment resolution fund. Our H-HAP is any minute, I'm hoping. Yoyin's going to let us know any minute when the HAP 5 comes in. And then it looks like hopefully we'll see HAP 6 in the future. And then, of course, we have the Prop 1 funding that we'll speak on a little bit later as well. Training and information, there was a few yellows on this as far as training provided. I reached out to the county and really had them educate everybody that's out in the field on all the processes to access the county programs. I wanted all of our field staff to know what programs are out there, how to access them, and just know that, what's available. So when they're engaging with somebody, that we have all the information to all programs that we have available. And then the 51-50 training was provided as well. We're still working on some of the details on that of how we can issue a 51-50. There's a clinician requirement on that that we're still working on. And lastly, this is just an overview of all services are, are green right now. Again, the, the partnership agreement, I, it's working well. We just talked about partnerships working well. I really feel that we've gotten to the point where we did the little, you know, forming, storming, and norming, so to speak. We're past that. Everybody knows what their, their jobs are. We're out there in the field every day doing, doing work. And I'll turn it over to Tim and have him finish up with the data that we have and all the work that we've done for this period.
Thank you, Brian. Good afternoon. Tim Letts, Director of Health Services, Sacramento County. I'm happy to be here today to, to highlight our ongoing behavioral health services and response for unsheltered residents in Sacramento. I'll echo what others have said, first off. It is nice to see this really working as a partnership. I know our, our teams are communicating far more regularly with good feedback, opportunities for improvement, troubleshooting. Certainly recognize the amount of work and effort that all of our teams have put in to this work and appreciate them every day for being out in the field, serving a really difficult population to, to wrap services around. So for the behavioral health data, this, this report really reflects for us, hopefully, what, what you will agree is some finer tuning. Every time we do this, we learn more, we identify new questions, try and do better data analysis and targeting. We want to make sure we're accurately reflecting services to the unsheltered population. And also, as I go through this today, note that while certainly we talk a lot about the HART team and their, their focus on encampment outreach, engagement, and our shelters, there's a lot happening across our behavioral health services continuum. And what we want to continue to do is learn, where are we serving this population better? How do we bring those groups together, learn from one another, and, and try and get people unsheltered on the streets, engaging more in services? So first off, I want to provide, this is a, a high-level highlight. In the next few slides, I'll get into more depth on this. But just starting at highest level, you can see in the upper left-hand corner, this first section is highlighting referrals and linkages to the unhoused population, not including the HART team. So this is all of our other behavioral health services that were working with the unhoused population. We made referrals for 757 individuals into behavioral health services in that six-month period. And notably, 609 had an intake and either got linked to a provider mental health or substance use treatment. Again, 80% rate for the referral to the linkage, really strong. And then, again, that's not including looking at our HART team. So a metric that I'll revisit in a bit because I think it's relevant to this discussion. And then separate from that, as I said, is our, our HART contacts that are on the lower right-hand side. And you can see HART had 2,235 outreach attempts over this six-month period. And 240 individuals actually agreed to engage with HART. From that, what we saw is 209 were screened, 219 were referred to behavioral health services. And then 81 of those were actually linked to behavioral health services. So contrasting other systems within behavioral health, we had about 80% going from that referral to linkage. With HART, we're seeing this one about 37%. Notable difference and ways that we know when we continue to talk about, how can we do better, better engagement? How do we get people to be more able to link once they make, we make that referral? And I'll, I'll note, too, if you look, we included this on here, and I'll talk a little bit about.
Can you go over just that last point again? One of our colleagues just wanted to hear that.
Sure.
Go back about 20 seconds.
Yeah, can you expand on the 37%? Like, do you guys have like reasons of why?
I know. It is a lot of numbers, so I'll. So what we saw from HART, if you look at that bottom number where it says, and apologies, a couple of those tabs, there should be tabs where it says, "City and Shelter Out" to show that we're showing a header. So 81 individuals linked to behavioral health. That's how many actually, once they went through the entire process, screening, referral, linked means they started treatment, they started engaging in services. That 81 was from, 219 is how many we referred in to say, hey, we recognize, we, we've screened you, we have identified that you need treatment, you've agreed to engage in it. But then there's that conversion rate of where we lose them. They, they don't show up, they move, we lose them. And so they don't actually then link to their first appointment. The rate there is, is where I was saying, the 37%. And I think it's notable because you look at, across the broader behavioral health system, the upper-left-hand slide, you see 757 individuals that were referred there, 609 linked. That's an 80% rate. It's a huge difference between what we're seeing for HART across the encampments and what we're seeing in some of our other service lines. And not to recognize, we, we, there's a lot of data that, it's, it's good to have the data, and we can parse into it, but I'm also trying to keep it high-level, but happy to answer more in-depth questions. What I'll talk about in a bit is if you look at where people are agreeing to be linked, where people are agreeing to be referred and assessed is typically in shelters right now, not in unhoused on the streets. And we have far, far greater success rate if they're in a shelter to be able to consistently engage with them, develop trust and rapport, and help get them linked into services. So I, I don't want to, I don't want to overcomplicate the discussion, and apologies, that one's also hard to read with the colors. But really, what we wanted to try and highlight with this is different pathways or front doors into behavioral health. And that's reflective of that broader number, not including HART. And really, when, when you distill this information down, there are three, you know, likely, really, three primary front doors or pathways. One is through legal, the legal pathway. So some of it's collaborative courts, some of it, CARE Court, CARE Act, when it comes online, AOT. Others are community-based outreach and crisis response. Our HART team is one of those. Community Wellness Response Team, our crisis teams, are others. And then our community centers for walk-ins, our core centers, cribs, and other types of, of services. For this discussion, what I'd really like to, to at least note here is a mental health urgent care clinic and the adjoining mental health treatment center. And this is a place for individuals in mental health crisis to come in, get stabilized, linked to services. Importantly, they receive drop-in from law enforcement. And we see these as a, a key resource as we implement SB 43. So direct, law enforcement drop-off, it'll also be able to receive direct drop-off coming December from ambulances in our EMS system. The next spot that I really wanted to highlight here is the Crisis Receiving for Behavioral Health or CRIBS. This is operated by WellSpace Health. It's voluntary, short-term recovery, detoxification, recuperative care from the effects of, of alcohol or drug use. Also going to be another key resource for us in SB 43 and law enforcement drop-off. When we're looking at people in crisis, what's the most appropriate place to bring them? And then, we've talked a lot about our core centers. That's our outpatient treatment systems. We do have two homeless navigator positions per core site whose job it is, is to go out into the community, identify the local encampments, try and get them to engage in services, try and get them to come into the core center. And we've expanded that program over this last year and are starting to, to track more results on how effective that approach has been. Recognizing we want the regional type of approach. And then lastly, I just want to note, CARE Court, CARE Act. I know this is a question that is on a lot of people's mind. We are set to go live this, of this December. And we see this as a, as a great tool for us to help incentivize those struggling with severe mental illness to engage in treatment. There are limitations to the CARE Act that we're going to have to, you know, continue to work through and learn. And we're learning a lot from Cohort 1 counties, the counties that went first in implementing. One of the, the most challenging pieces is that this does not compel the individual to engage in treatment. It is done through a petition to the courts. The courts then are ordering behavioral health to do an assessment and develop a care plan. But it is not legally requiring the individual to engage in those services.
Except it could quickly lead to an appropriate conservatorship if the individual's not participating in, in the care treatment plan, depending upon, again, how assertive the petitioners are in making. in making sure that the individual is participating in their treatment plan.
Yeah, and we see this, the most successful outcome is that they start to engage in that process, and they voluntarily start to go into treatment services. And we've seen that a lot with Cohort One counties. Going through this, they receive assistance from legal services to represent them, which again, going back to conversations about whether that would lead to a conservatorship or not, really does depend on the individual, their, and their level of mental illness. I think some of those we might see coming through SB 43 instead of Care Court or other avenues. So looking at all of our front doors then, and what we're seeing in stats, and that is smaller on that as well, so apologies for that. It's in the main report as well, if you, that I think is a little easier to see than in the slide format. But what this is showing you is, first of all, on this upper left-hand corner, it's showing you how many individuals were referred to Behavioral Health by their housing status. So there are 1,129 that were referred in that were identified as unhoused. And then you can see the breakdown, how many were met the definition of literal homelessness and chronic, literal homelessness and not chronic. Some through the shelters that we talked about, some through bridge or interim housing, and others through transitional temporary housing. Next, when we look of moving over to the upper right-hand side, you can see how many of them were linked. So of those, 1,129, 800 then, or 70.9% were actually linked to services. And really interesting, lower right-hand corner is showing you where they were linked, what services are they going into. And I think what we see here is probably more reflective of what we would expect with some of the needs of the population. You can see 33%, the highest category, we're going into a substance use treatment residential program. And then another 27.5% were going into a mental health full-service partnership. And then 22% going into our core outpatient treatment program. Then another 12% going into substance use outpatient.
Maybe as you're going, just for clarity, because I think, I know some of my colleagues are pinging me a little bit, and I, just the information itself, let's take this chart. We're talking about a base of 1,129 people. That's what, is that city and county, or just city?
So this will include all unsheltered. The challenge with unsheltered, in the HART team, it's a lot easier because we know where the HART team is deployed and where they're making the outreach. At our core centers or through some of our other, like, access line, we, when they're homeless, we don't always have a residence for them. And we try and identify that, but it's not consistent, and so it creates a lot of data gaps for us. And in part because they're moving around. And so sometimes they could be in the city, sometimes they could be in unincorporated areas or another city.
But I understand the data is not perfect for the reasons you just described. But if somebody's showing up to the 14th and X core center on a regular basis, can't they be counted as somebody who's probably from the city with appropriate asterisks?
I think you could absolutely make those assumptions.
So is that, I mean, in terms of pushing here on the data? Beyond my term here.
Yes.
Is that something that we are committed to trying to refine so that we do have a better idea of the impact of the partnership agreement in the city? We obviously care about everybody, and a person is a person. But in terms of understanding the impact, positive impact of the partnership agreement, is that, we've talked about this in the four-by-two, is that something that we can commit to trying to refine, even if it's imperfect?
I am committed to trying, as I know.
Okay.
Sherry, as I look back over there, Sherry Green, who's the division manager over these programs, knows I have asked this question a number of times.
Because you know I'm going to ask it, I'm sorry.
And I want to know it too, frankly.
Let me, let me put out my broad apology at the very beginning of the questioning here. Because it's all in, it's all in the spirit of what we're all about, right? Just trying to help as many people as possible, but I'm going to ask the questions anyway. So let's, so we need to refine that data, but let's translate this document just a little bit. So when we say that the percent of referrals linked to mental health services, outpatient FSP or residential treatment, and the number again is large, it's 1,129, we're not saying that all those people have actually been enrolled in some form of those services, or are we?
We're saying in the period between January to June.
Yes.
Of that 1,129, 800 agreed to be linked, so that is they began treatment. Of that 800, these percentages of each of the different treatment categories, that is where they landed or what treatment services-
In, when you say linked, I want to make sure linked means enrolled. They were enrolled. Okay, so that's not, that's, that's a better number than maybe some of the other charts imply or express. And that's why I kind of want to, want to go through this. So what you're saying here is 800 people from the city and county, because again, that's a key question.
We haven't been able to figure that out yet.
Were enrolled in services. One quarter of that 800, 27.5%, 200 were enrolled in the county, were within the county in FSPs. So that's the, my famous question, that's 200 people over the last six months enrolled in full-service partnerships from the streets to a full-service partnership?
Yes.
Okay, in the county, and we don't know that breakdown, city and county. And then an additional 33% of 800, 250 or so were actually enrolled in residential treatment.
Or substance use, yes.
Okay, so that's, that's 500 people or so, 500 people or so from the county over these last six months that were moved from the streets into some form of intensive treatment.
Yes.
And we don't know how many of those people were from the city. Okay, and that's, okay, keep going, sorry. I'll get to-
No, no, this is, I appreciate the questions because this helps us again.
Well, okay, so-
As we come the next time, this is where we're looking to fine-tune what we want to-
So maybe I'll get it all out of the way then, because, so then when you get to the HART team, which is a subset.
Yes.
That's where the numbers don't look as good.
Yes, and the last section of this is going to-
You know, you get, you got 20, in the city partnership agreement, you get, well, you, the HART team touched in some way 2,235 people. That's in the city, right?
That is in the city.
That's in the city.
That is the city and also the shelters.
Okay, and 20 people plus the 60 in the shelters, so in fairness.
Might be helpful, which slide are you on?
I'm sorry.
If I can go back to it.
I'm on the last one.
Okay, so you're jumping ahead, that's why.
I'm jumping ahead, but I'm really trying to help here to kind of, to kind of bring the information together. Because what I just went through, as you explained, was HART plus. It's the entire Behavioral Health-
Yes.
-homeless system. We know 500 people went from the streets to residential treatment or full-service partnerships. We don't know the differentiation between city and county. Now, the HART team, which is the 10 outreach workers, plus the CAL AIM, the health plan workers in the cities.
Plus two shelter workers.
Plus two shelter workers. There, the HART team touches 2,235 people.
Yes, they were averaging about 300 to 400 outreach attempts per month.
And of course, the numbers keep going down. And at the end of the day, 20 people get linked, which means enrolled, in services. We don't know what, how many, we don't want to know whether that's outpatient, FSP, or residential treatment.
If you look, this last slide-
Okay.
Might help get to what you're asking.
Go go.
So this is HART-specific.
Okay, go go.
And this, recognizing this is busy, so, and it lost headers on there. Each of those lines should have said January, February, March, April. So where you see those green lines, that's representing a delineation between each of the months. So that's six months' worth of data. So what you can see, the top slide is showing you how many referrals, and it's by program. So purple is outpatient, blue is FSP, pink are substance use narcotic treatment programs, or just substance use outpatient, and light blue is substance use residential.
Only from the HART outreach?
This is only HART now.
And, right, okay. And the numbers are pretty low.
They are, and that's why I want to, and I, what I want to highlight here is, I don't want this to be reflective that HART is not out there working hard.
These are great people, working their hearts, working their hearts out, no pun intended, along with the city, going for it.
Three to 400 contacts a month, they are, they are out there hitting the pavement. But it's-
Begs a lot of policy questions here, which is what we want to talk about here today.
Yes.
Okay, not personnel questions or performance questions. Because the people, I know the people, they're out there doing great work. It's a policy, so, go go.
So to your point, yes, what we see is a much steeper drop-off between what we get for referrals and linkages to HART. You'll notice the highest bar on there is the shelter outreach. So where HART is most effective is where individuals are in a shelter. And that's where we're seeing double, triple the amount of people willing to engage, willing to be screened and referred, and also being linked to services. So it's telling, again, of, we're, we need to address the shelter piece early, as early as possible, because that is a key indicator for them willing to engage.
Sorry, I have a clarifying question again. And there's only, there's probably no perfect way to present this data, so thank you for working through us here. So you had mentioned 80% success rate and then versus 37% success. So obviously we ask why, and your answer was sheltered. But when I look at this chart, it doesn't look like they're reaching 80% enrollment from shelters either. And so is that, so I guess I'm still seeing a lower-than-normal trend. Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, so because this, the way that this breaks it down, it's, if you were to add all the columns up
Okay.
From each of the categories, so the shelter categories together, the city teams, because this also includes the county teams.
Okay.
That's, we're basing that 37% off of the aggregate numbers.
Yeah, no, I mean, I guess I'm just, the answer though is that you think it's because they're sheltered versus unsheltered? When I look at the sheltered numbers, because you've broken it out here, so like, we can use February as an example. It looks like this chart's telling me that they made contact and referred 27 people from a shelter in February, but only nine of those people actually linked. And so that's less than 80%.
Definitely less than 37.
Yeah, so I guess I'm just curious if there's other things. And then that might be a further discussion question, but it doesn't seem like it's as simple-
Shelter is not-
As saying sheltered versus unsheltered.
The only thing.
Okay.
What we're seeing though is where we're engaging people cold. That is otherwise not, not being in our system. That's the most, right now, what we're seeing is the most effective indicator to say, yes, they're more willing to engage. We still, the hardest one is still to get people that are even in shelters to agree to substance use. Whereas when we look at our other front doors, we're having much more success in linking unhoused into substance use disorder. And our task now on the Behavioral Health side is to try and figure out why is that? And what can we do to maybe replicate that?
Okay, thank you.
So we kind of jumped ahead, I don't know if you, I think this does really summarize the last point, which is, we know where people are coming into our system broadly. This information is presenting, where the referrals are going from HART. The vast majority of them, as you can see, are to outpatient, usually because that's what either the individual's willing to engage in. They're not willing to engage in an FSP-level service at that point. And that's a safer entry point to then get them into a outpatient program that may assess them for higher-level an FSP substance use. But that's where the focus typically is. Some refer directly into an FSP, others directly into substance use. And I'm happy to answer questions. That was the end of our specific data piece. But again, happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay, let's open up, I know Vice Mayor Maples has been waiting, and others have been waiting as well. Do we have public testimony?
I do know how, I have no public comment cards for this item.
Okay, then let's really open up this discussion, we'll turn it over to Vice Mayor Maple.
Clarify, that was the end of your presentation, not just the data piece?
Um, yes.
Okay, great, that was a fair one.
But happy to answer questions if we need to.
Thank you.
Turn it back over to Brian.
And thank you, thank you, Mayor. And just really want to appreciate both the city and the county teams. I know this is hard work, it's hard work, it's, you guys have been through a lot over the last six months, year, and longer coordinating together. So I just really want to appreciate that because there's no roadmap for this. You know, it's certainly something that we, you know, we've seen a massive increase over in recent years, and every jurisdiction is trying to figure out what to do. So I think we're doing overall a great job in terms of our outreach and the efforts. I did have a couple questions. When I was reading through the data, I couldn't find anything that was, you know, how many exits to permanent housing did we see in totality, or in the city, in the county? I saw, I saw one graph that Brian showed me that I think was only the Community Health Works team, and that was 13 people, but I'm not sure, do we have a total number?
So, yeah, Brian and I were chatting about that before this because last time that, that was a number that I think was generated from HMIS and realized it didn't get plugged into our data. So I think Brian has a preliminary number. I will highlight to you one metric on this graph, which is the lower right-hand side, where it, the upper left is showing you when they entered our system, their housing status. The lower right is showing you where they are today. And why I think that's relevant, and what I would highlight, at least for our direct Behavioral Health clients that we're looking at, is we have about, from that, about 12% now that, whereas prior to that, this was not a category. They are now housed, no imminent risk of homelessness, so that translates to 95 individuals. Additionally, we have more in-bridge housing that are sheltered or transitional temporary housing. So that starts to speak to part of it, but that's just the picture for those in our Behavioral Health system. And I think Brian might have a broader number for the HMIS piece.
Oh, that's okay, in fact, while he does that, I see him calculating over there. I actually have an additional question for you, and then he can come up. So I know you mentioned Care Court, you know, we're, I think we're coming up, what is it, the December of this year? So just wanted to ask you, from the county's perspective, do you all feel prepared? Do we know what that looks like yet here? And have you had any conversations with some of the other counties that have already done it about how well it's working?
Lots of conversations.
Okay.
I'm on the statewide task force that is, that is looking at all the Cohort One counties, looking at the data. We feel comfortable locally that we're ready for it. I think the hard part's going to be, I mean, we talked a little bit about it on that item, which is expectations of, it's a good tool, and it's something that we really want to see effective. But one, I think it's going to take time to educate everybody on how to use it, particularly because of the petition that has to be filed with the courts, which is pretty lengthy, where we want to make sure people have the resources to be able to complete those petitions. And then also, because it doesn't compel the individual at this point, it's still, it's going to require the ability to really engage with them and get that trust and their willingness to- get that trust and their willingness to go into treatment, and hopefully the black robe effect helps. But what a lot of the Cohort One counties are saying is there's a high no-show rate for those individuals into court.
What is the black robe effect?
The concept of, even though it's not, the judge isn't legally ordering them to receive services, they're still going to a court, they're still having a judge tell them, you know, this is what I would like you to do. But again, then the judge is ordering behavioral health to do the report and assessment, not compelling the individual.
Okay, that's really helpful, thank you. And really look forward to, you know, continuing to see how this gets implemented. I know it could have a big impact on our county and our city. And then, another question I have was related to the 5150 requirements. I know, Brian, you said that you're still working on what that looks like, but just wanted to see if you could provide a little bit more detail for us about the process and some of the challenges, if you've had those.
I'm sorry.
For the 5150.
5150. So the 5150s, the process is that you file an application with the county that you meet the requirements to provide a 5150, and part of that requirement is to have a clinician on staff. And there's a list of individuals that will meet that requirement, physician, licensed clinical social worker, registered nurse. So we're looking into, can we provide that service? What clinician do we have on staff that would allow us to have that program and provide that service?
Okay, that's really helpful. And, you know, I see that more so for, you know, public information and knowledge, is, you know, I think that sometimes, and I certainly get calls about it, and, you know, from constituents, that, you know, sometimes you're driving around or walking around town, and you see someone who, you know, you might think, oh my gosh, that person clearly needs help. They're talking to themselves, or doing this or the other thing. And I think people don't always understand how, like, for good reason, we have a lot of protections in place in our society that makes it difficult for the government or anyone else to come in and take away your rights, and tell you, you've got to be somewhere, or put you away. And so I think those are good things, but I think we're trying to figure out as, as a government and society, like, what the line is, and how do we help people who maybe not, may not be able to help themselves. And that's part of what we're all trying to figure out collectively as a state. And it's one of the challenges that we have when we're looking around, especially on the behavioral health component. So I just wanted to shout that out, that we are, we're in motion, we're working together with us and the county to figure out how to best implement that, but I think that will be important. Thank you.
And so there were some interesting studies of some cities that have overused the 5150, and by using it so much, the end assessment result was that most of them that were placed on 5150s really didn't meet the requirement, and so they were, then released. So that's just something that we have to be aware of and be careful of, executing too many 5150s.
Yeah, and I think we, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I don't think that that's something that we want to do. But we really do want to be targeting people who need it the most, potentially, and so just thank you for your work. And then, whenever you have the numbers, maybe you can follow up afterwards with all of us on the numbers for permanent housing. But with that, that's it through me, Mayor. Thank you.
You, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. First question is for Tim, actually, because I want to make sure I understand what is and is not included. So I recently heard about a new program the county started, which I'm very, are starting, which I'm very excited about. You may have known that we have an issue with jail release downtown, where people are released from the jail into nothing, and end up in the park, or in River District, or kind of wherever. And so I was approached by one of the people who won the RFP, because they're opening a clinic in my district, where they're gonna catch people coming out of the jail who have diagnosed mental illness with full-service partnerships. As I understand, this is a new program that you all are standing up, and so I guess I wanted to just hear from you, because I know about the clinic in my district, because I've been trying to help them, like, outreach to the community and answer questions and stuff to support it, because it's something that way, way overdue, very excited to see it happen. But I guess I'm just curious, A, if you could give any details on sort of the scale of what this program will be, and the timing of when we expect it to roll out, because I think the sooner we can start, we know a lot of folks on the street are ending up in the jail for a myriad of reasons, and to catch them coming out of that jail in a full-service partnership seems like just a really great strategy. So I'm curious as to when, and how many, and all of that. But also curious how that intersects with the data you're collecting, because I do think this could be, I don't know if people exiting the jail would be considered unhoused, even if they were unhoused before they went into the jail. And so those are two related questions.
Well, and they are related, because the fear is, of course, maybe if they're not unhoused now, when they exit the jail, they're high, high-risk that they will be.
Will be, yeah.
So there's actually quite a bit that we're doing in this space on justice-involved population. So I'll try and go through the litany of them and see if I, I think what you're referring to is our Thrive program. So that is our, historically, we had called it forensics, you know, when we looked at how we want to market, manage, and outreach to this program. It's our Thrive program. So similar to our core centers, we actually have two Thrive outpatient clinics that we're opening, looking at opening a third, and Bay Area Community Services and WellSpace Health, sorry, wanted to make sure I got that right. We've had a lot of different RFPs lately, are taking on those locations. We see one naturally at the Stockton Boulevard campus, once that gets built out for WellSpace. And that is a spot for people being released. It'll help with our diversion programs, our, and mental health quirks in general. But then also, as you described, is we're, we're trying to build out a network where our people are released in the middle of the night. Right now, we have Cohiwo in their cafe that is right next door to the jail, and we're really trying to find a model where we can get that going 24/7, or link it with a second nonprofit organization that can help when somebody's released. We want, you know, at a minimum, let's get them a place to sleep, let's get them some food, some essentials, and then get them linked into services. And we also are increasing the number of FSP, our Thrive FSP slots by 200, more than double what we were before. Those we're hoping to bring online come November. It's really just as fast as the providers can get space, hire people, and start to ramp up for that program. At the intersection of CalAim, what CalAim's really doing for us now is providing much better jail-in-reach and community-based linkages. So we're doing a lot more, or starting to do a lot more assessments, pre-release 90 days, if we know 90 days out, and making sure that then, when they do get released, I'm essentially developing a transition plan like you would in an emergency room, where you, you know, where are you gonna stay? Can we start to set up housing resources? What can we link you to outpatient treatment, or residential, if you still need it? Those types of services when they get released, so that ideally, they're not being released at 2:00 AM with absolutely no resources.
Yeah. No, I want to thank you for hearing the plea, and increasing the FSP slots by that many, because it is, I mean, just an incredible compliment, I think, to what the Vice Mayor was asking about with Care Court, to know that people with diagnosed mental illness in the jail, they can start outreach then, and when they come out, they're immediately caught in a system that will do housing, whatever it takes, as the mayor likes to say, to ensure that they're successful. I mean, honestly, this is my theory as to why when you look at the point-in-time count and the distribution between jurisdictions, that the share in Sacramento has increased from 70 to 78% of the total unhoused in the county. I think this is part of the reason why. I mean, folks end up in the jail for, like I said, a myriad of reasons, and then they stay there. When there used to be a program, and this is outside your jurisdiction, so I'm just gonna say it into the ether, hoping somebody at the county who controls this is listening, the sheriff used to give people a ride back to the jurisdiction where they were arrested in during the daytime, and drop them off at the probation office. So even if they were on probation, they could immediately link. And if they weren't on probation, they had a phone, they had a bathroom, they had a bus pass, they had someplace they could go. That was, and if they were arrested in Elk Grove, they're not released down here. In the middle of the night, they're actually taken back to Elk Grove, so that they can reconnect to their community down there, whatever that looks like. So that's just me, I'm putting that out into the ether, hoping that program eventually comes back, because it stopped under the former sheriff and hasn't restarted under the new sheriff, and I still don't know why. But thank you for that, because I think that program, and I wanted to make sure my colleagues were aware that it's standing up, because, yeah, like I said, I found out when the clinic operator reached out to me and said, hey, we found a location in your district, are you okay with this? And we said, of course we are, because either way, they're gonna end up in our community, right? Either because they were released and they're unhoused now, and they don't have a place to go. At least this way, there's a service provider who's gonna catch them into full-service partnerships, which is great, great progress. So I just want to thank you.
And my hope is, with CalAim, there is a transportation benefit. We're struggling with the managed care plans of how to get that to roll out and be as effective as we can for kind of an as-needed basis. Because ideally, the vision would be, they get out, even if the sheriff's not doing it, CalAim is able to provide the transport, and we're taking them somewhere where they can stay that night, rather than just go out on the street.
Which is fabulous. Yeah, I've still never figured out why that program stopped under the former sheriff, and so whatever you can do is greatly appreciated. I will now have a question for Brian, so thank you, Tim, for that. So I've asked a couple meetings, and when the last I talked to the city manager, I was hoping for this presentation to include an update on how our enforcement protocols have changed since the grants-pass decision. Are you prepared to speak at all to that today?
I could. It's, so it's, I guess it kind of folds into this partnership, because it does address how we deploy out our teams. The, so the change in our protocol was to enforce the unlawful camping. And that was essentially the only change in how we're providing compliance and enforcement with the incident management team. It didn't change how we prioritize, it didn't change how we deploy our teams. It was strictly the unlawful camping. Now, the unlawful camping ordinance, we have had, and even prior to the Supreme Court, if we had shelter space, we were able to use the unlawful camping ordinance, and we have in the past. And now, with the Supreme Court decision, now we can use unlawful camping, period. What that means is that you kind of have camping, you can't be, you can't have a tent up, you can't have camping paraphernalia, you can't be set up as a camp. And that's the piece that is being enforced now. So essentially, what that looks like, is if I have a tent set up, you can't have a tent set up, you break down your tent, if you have it folded up, and you're mobile and standing there, then you are violating the unlawful camping.
Okay. And I know when we adopted the enforcement protocol, I mean, we did give the city manager leeway to amend the protocol if, as he saw fit. But I know we also passed in the resolution direction to avoid citations as much as possible. So could you tell me if there's been any citations issued?
I can't, because I haven't seen the data from this past week.
Okay, cool. I would appreciate a follow-up on that, thank you. And then just broadly speaking back to the county, before I exceed my time, I just want to, I think publicly thank our Mayor Pro Tim for her advocacy on behalf of the city and all of us who have river communities, but obviously those north of the river who've been directly impacted by some of the enforcement the county has done along the river, and I guess I just want to say that. I think that we are all obviously willing to spend the time and the energy to work together and to try to figure this out. And as was mentioned at the beginning, this partnership agreement is a floor for collaboration and not the ceiling. And I see this as a perfect opportunity for us to be collaborating more together, to come up with solutions that will work best for both jurisdictions, rather than just pushing people back and forth between county and city territory. But that's all I'll say on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, and Mayor Pro Tim Telemontes, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. I have a question, probably for SHRA and DCR, after everyone, Sack steps forward. I know one of the challenges that we had was with, like, the sharing of information, because of HIPAA and just rules in place to protect privacy for our in-house residents, and we were working on a form to make sure that the information was mainstream, that you guys can share and collaborate more. Do we have something ready to go now?
Yes, we actually have a release of information, an ROI form, that we started reaching out specifically to the individuals who had vouchers, who were impacted by, you know, the fact that we're going into a shortfall situation. And I believe we had, last time I looked, over 400 individuals actually had signed the release of information, so that we could share information back and forth.
Okay, and so for DCR and our city-county teams that go out into the field, is that form now part of, you know, something that people can sign off on?
So, if I could just speak to that. So our focus was, like I said, on those individuals who actually had a voucher, and who were out searching. So that's really who we focused on originally. But we did send it out in blanket and send it out to all of those people, all of those individuals who were searching for housing, and that's why we received so many back. I don't know if we have actually got them out to the, to the individuals who are out at the encampments at this particular point. I don't think so. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, we never came up with a final agreement amongst everybody on how we were gonna distribute and get signatures, and what form we were going to use for release of information.
So then I guess it's direction, as Sack steps forward, since Lisa, you work with both the city and the county, to make sure that we have something in place, so that the city and county and SHRA can work collaboratively and share information for our in-house population. But I guess, I just want to give direction, so for the next time, I'll ask about it. The more information we can work, like, share, and the more information we have, the better off we're gonna be in serving the people. For Tim, I have a question. The city and the county numbers, I mean, 80% of people being connected to services in the county compared to our city, low rate of 37% still is, like, sitting on my mind and my heart. Like, does the county have an, or the city, like, do we have an explanation of, like, or at least theories of why this is? Is it because the hardest-to-reach populations are in the city limit? Is it because, like, what are the reasons aside from, I mean, like, is there any explanation as to why 80% versus 37%?
Well, keep in mind, 80% is what we're seeing. I mean, that's going to be our, you know, people coming into our core centers, that's gonna be people coming out of jail, that's going to be people, you know, linked across all, like, coming out of our mental health urgent care. So all of our other front doors. I think what we're seeing, and where that 80 versus 37% really speaks to, is how challenging it is to get unsheltered homeless on the streets, to really be ready to engage in services. We know, by trying to chip away at it, something that we, a lever that we can use is shelter. We're hoping, and I, we didn't really talk about statistics, but I will say, some of the efforts that we're trying to do for, like, bridge housing. So we have 313 bridge housing units that we're in process of developing out, 80 are active right now. We hope those, again, are opportunities to then get somebody into a stable housing environment and engage in services. So we're looking at what tools we can, we can use to help impact that 37%, but it's just coming up with enough shelter options for the need, as we know, it just, the need is huge.
I was gonna put my some details, or suggestions.
I'm sorry, I helped collect some of that evidence. That 87% does count those other front doors, but those other front doors, like the shelter, folks are in one place. So those are folks coming out of hospitals. So there's people experiencing homelessness who are hospitalized. They have the opportunity to have that enrollment and have the provider come out and talk to them. We're looking at folks also discharging from jails to our collaborative courts. So again, it's somebody who's a captive audience. Our crisis residential programs, which are temporary residential facilities, so that 80% includes those situations in which people are temporarily housed or institutionalized. So I think that might have some impact on that overall number.
Thank you, that's helpful. And then in the four-by-two, you shared information about, like, our fire department, EMS department, being able to take, not take people to the hospital, because our hospitals are so impacted, and the wall time for our firefighters is serious. And so can you talk a little bit about that, so that people understand, like, what our next options are gonna be?
Yes. So we are in process of rolling out our, it's called a triage to alternate destination program. And what that program does will be one of, I think, three counties in the- And what that program does will be one of, I think, three counties in the state that is rolling out this program. Trying to address our historically high ambulance patient offload times and also try and get people to the right level of, of treatment when they're in mental health crisis. So what that will do is allow our ambulances to take people to certain designated drop-off points. So Mental Health Treatment Center is one of those locations. Crisis Receiving for Behavioral Health, the crib, is another. We're in the process of bringing Heritage Oaks online and Sierra Vista Hospital. And we can continue to expand that. All of those locations then will be able to accept people coming in, in lieu of going to the, to the ER.
Okay, that's really helpful.
And December is when we expect to be going live with that program.
Okay, thank you. And I have three more questions. How is the county track, and the city and county, tracking people that don't want to talk to us? You know, like, we have the data on the people that we can know, hey, maybe they're in the city, maybe in the county. And hey, we had a conversation, they used the service, we were able to collect some data. But there's a lot of people that when you guys approach people and you say, hey, I'm Brian Pedro with the city, they just say, go away. And you just never know. So like, is there a way that you guys can track that and just put person one reached out, denied, you know, like?
I think HMIS, if... Sorry, I'll let the Sheri in the field team be able to answer that question for the nuance.
I'm closer. We are attempting to, but it can be difficult because those folks could be duplicated. So person number one might be wearing a green hat today. And we mark down person number one, green hat says no. And tomorrow, they're wearing a red hat. And now it's person number one with a red hat. So it's really difficult to guarantee we're not accidentally duplicating folks. So that tends to be one of our largest challenges.
Yeah, and I think it's okay if you're duplicating people because it's, you're going out there. And if they say no, then you go out there again. It's a second attempt and it's hard to know, you know? I mean, track them if they change clothes, you know? But like, having data to show how many times we're going out there, I think is so important, just as important as people that say yes and what services they prefer, so. And then for the city attorney, what, as the county implements care courts in December, like, what is the city's involvement going to be in this? Or for Brian, maybe, I don't know who, but for PD, fire, and DCR, like, what are we going to be doing?
Go ahead, Matt. I got an answer.
Okay.
Well, I think the mayor wants to answer that question, just.
Well, no, it's, it's, I can tell you what the law says, and it actually leads to a question I was going to ask Tim. Under the law, and by the way, the city attorney has already done very good preparatory work on some of these questions. Under the law, city officials, including the fire department, entities like the DCR, can actually file the petitions under care court. And that's different because cities don't have the authority to file the conservatorship petitions, for example. And so it raises a question that I wanted to ask the county team here. How do you feel about that? How do you feel about the city filing petitions for people that are inside the city? That are unsheltered, that, to the layperson's eye and the, and the experience of the DCR, the police and the fire department are in desperate need of treatment and are out on the streets? How do you feel about the city filing these petitions and actually seeking assertively to enroll more people into some form or level of service? I think this is a question that's going to be asked and, and answered past December.
And from, from my perspective, I, I see it as an opportunity of if this, if this helps to move people to engage more in treatment and services, I think it can be a benefit for, for us. We want to make sure we're, we're ready. So I think my fear is, you know, a, a fire hose of, you know, 100 people in, in a week, and can we keep up with it? That hasn't been the experience in, in other jurisdictions, the Cohort One counties. And I, and I do want to caveat, and I'll go back and look at this because my understanding is who can file petitions? The participant can file it, adult who lives with the participant, spouse, registered domestic partner, and other relation, essentially. Person who stands in the place of the parent to the participant. Director of a hospital to which the person was recently hospitalized. Director of a public or charitable organization who has provided or is currently providing behavioral health services to the participant. And then a licensed behavioral health professional who has supervised the treatment of the participant for mental illness.
I, I don't have the statute in front of me, but I know that city officials can file these petitions. Mr. Ruijek?
I concur.
Which, and if so, that's, I'm happy to, to do a follow-up with my team on that.
Good, okay.
So, yes, I, I, I do think we would be expecting that. What we are hoping is that, again, we don't have floodgates because like any program, it's going to take time for processes to work themselves out, make sure we have enough staffing, make sure we have the, the pipeline. And ultimately, again, I would hope, particularly if they're unhoused, we want to be able to have some type of a housing place to, to put them.
Go ahead. Mayor Pro Tim, then I'm going to follow up on this line of questioning, and then we'll conclude the hearing. Go ahead.
No, that's really helpful. I mean, for everyone, I mean, it's just number one question everyone's asking about care courts, right? And I guess my next, you know, kind of my question, my ask is like, in the spirit of collaborative with Measure O and this partnership agreement, the remaining $5.6 million from Assemblymember McCarty to see if the city can be in the loop as it's allocated. I don't know, at the county, yeah, that'd be great, at the county board of supervisors. I wasn't sure what the, what the direction was, so if we can get...
Yeah, thank you for the question. Siobhan Cattori, Deputy County Executive. We are definitely intending to work with city staff. We're reaching out to the staff now to get a list of individuals who may have been displaced from the parkway previously so that we can help to prioritize who goes into these services. And absolutely, we will be having that discussion with city staff about any ideas they have. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I, I think I want to end here, but it may take a few minutes, with where Vice Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Telemontes was sort of going and the question that she asked and then I followed up with on care courts because it really strikes at the heart of the question. So, thank you, by the way, for taking us through all the numbers. And I just want to say from the outset here that I remain hopeful and grateful, hopeful and grateful to all the city officials and all the county officials that are working their hearts out here to try to not only improve our collaboration, but obviously with a heart for the work, no pun intended, to, 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 to help the people. Because that's, I know that's what you're about and the people you work with are about. And I get into this apologetic thing because despite the way that I really feel about all of you as professionals, I look at the system and I look at the numbers, and I don't think the numbers are nearly good enough. There, there just aren't enough people being enrolled in services, period, end of story. And by the way, this is not a Sacramento County thing. This is a statewide thing. This is, this was the impetus for Prop One with all of its controversy. I know many county partners not liking it because it reduced discretion, but it's seeking to beg a question. How do we get more people the help that they need? And it's the question about the city having the ability to file the care court petitions as well. And you answered very honestly. I appreciated your answer. Yes, you'd welcome it, but please make sure that you don't go too fast or, or too many because we may not be able to handle it. And yet, there are still so many walking wounded people on our streets despite our 41% reduction, which, by the way, we should take great pride in. 8% up statewide, 41% in the city and county of Sacramento, great pride. So I remain hopeful and grateful. And it's my job, and it's been a lifelong passion, to do everything to make sure that nobody's left out there, and there are too many people, so it begs a lot of questions here. Why aren't the numbers better? Mayor Pro Tim Telemontes asked about the difference between the city and the county. That, that's one question. I think you answered it well. But the bigger question for me is how, let's just take the city as what, let's just take the city. Because I'm sure the same is true in the unincorporated county and other parts of the county. It's true statewide, again. The teams, interdisciplinary teams, touch 2,235 people. And only 100-plus are referred to treatment. What is, are there lessons to be learned from this? I think, whether it's a resource question or a systems question, that we're not applying the, the evidence-based approach of assertive engagement with people. Assertive engagement. It's meaning, it means you don't touch people one time who are, who are, I keep, you know, half-naked and talking to themselves and say, do you want to, do you want help? Or let me get your information. That's not what, that's not the evidence-based practice. The evidence-based practice is assertive outreach. It means you persist with that individual. And if you persist and the outreach worker, whether it's the county worker, the Hope Cooperative worker, the Turning Point worker, the CalAim worker, they develop that relationship, that trusting relationship with the individual, over 50% of them, in my experience, will then come in if we have something to offer them and the capacity. And when I look at this difference between 2,235 and barely 100 people who are, who are even being referred to treatment, it tells me that the outreach is not whatever it takes to actually make an even greater difference on our streets. And again, this is a fundamental human rights issue. It's a political issue. It's still the thing that causes the most concern and unhappiness by our constituents. We've ramped up enforcement, Councilmember Vanzuela, there's no question about it. Grants Pass allows it, and it's where the majority of this city council. And I've changed even a little bit, too. Not a lot, but a little bit. It's the way it has to be. We cannot have these big encampments. But if you're just moving people, right, from one corner to the next, well, you're not really providing relief to the people suffering on the streets nor the communities that want a safer and a cleaner city. So what is the mode and method of outreach to the people on our streets, especially those living with underlying conditions? Because I don't think it's whatever it takes. And why is that? Again, not Sacramento County alone, not Sacramento City alone, because the cities are partners here. It's us, too. This is statewide. This is the same thing where the governor is frustrated, a sec, everybody's frustrated, right? And rather than point fingers, we got to like analyze it. Because now there's more money. What happens when you have good and great people in a flawed system? I mean, that to me is sort of what we grapple with as, as policymakers here. Is it a resource question? Maybe. The partnership agreement, as many of my colleagues have said, the 10 outreach workers, heart workers, that's a floor. It's not a ceiling. The whole behavioral health system, together with DCR, is supposed to have broader reach. And so if there's a resource gap, we better identify what that is. Is it a systems question? What is the gatekeeping that goes on? You heard my concern about the core centers. Another question that sort of begged in this data here is you have these core centers, which are not just day drop-in centers. They are intended to be triage centers. That's, that's what... You know, you talk about captive audience with the greater success with shelter, right on. That's when, when people are there and you can take the time and assess them. Well, similar with the core centers. And yet, I've asked the hard question, and we still need to differentiate that data, but it doesn't appear that there are that many people in the city core centers are actually ending up in, being enrolled in mental health services. And, you know, the untrained eye knows that the people that are there are people who qualify for those services. So this is real, and we have to ask this. And, and then the, is it a resource question? Is it a systems question? Or do we need to look harder into all of our, our hearts? Not just this county, the entire system? And ask whether it's a question of will? Because the people that are, there are people that are so obviously sick that we're not applying assertive outreach to. And why, why not? Why not? Is it because, rationally, it's just too hard? It's too hard that, that the population itself is that hard? And there are too many, too many people? Maybe the system is flawed in that we are not providing you enough incentives to actually make getting people from the core centers to being enrolled in the services a higher priority? Maybe this whole system ought to be a lot more pay-for-performance with a lot more upside for all of the providers, the counties and the cities, to actually get it the hardest to serve people. So I'm so mixed because I do have genuine gratitude. And I'm so happy that we have this foundation, and it's going to reap greater rewards. I know it, I know it, I know it. But I'm going to, at the end of my day, ask this question about why more people are not enrolled in, in actual service because the numbers are way too low. No fault. Something we all have to grapple with together because the 41% may not last. We want to go down farther. And even with that overall number being down, the problem is still serious. And there are still the people who are most visibly ill out there and, and causing harm to themselves and also causing a lot of distress to our communities. So thank you. I, I hope that we continue to always push each other. You know, I know it's, and it can be, I know it causes, you know, rankers sometimes, especially between the electeds and all this. Wow, you're... No, this is what we have to do. Criticize us. We got to push you. You got to push us because our community's dependent on it. So thank you. I think it was a great hearing. Let's go forward, okay? Thanks. Brian, got anything?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I mean, you're spot on on this. And the beauty of it is where we're at, that we can now look at our system and see with actual data of, of where we need to improve. I mean, that's, that's where we've gotten to at this point. So, this is your last...
Assertive out, assertive, consistent outreach. That's what I'm calling for. More than one touch.
To the county and the city, maybe we got to do one more of these before the mayor leaves December.
I think there would be a unanimous vote among the staff to vote no on that request, but...
Come back for the next one.
Challenge each other.
Hey, thanks, okay? Very good.
So Mayor, I have one public comment speaker for matters not on the agenda. And then if it's acceptable to you, I'd like to adjourn this meeting to our closed session. I just have something to redo the record. Our public comment speaker is Gary McGlynn. This is for matters not on the agenda.
Good afternoon. I'd like to address you as a resident, a taxpayer, and a pedestrian. Over the weekend, or earlier in the week, I heard the term "emergency" being used. And that got my attention. But at 1:00 this afternoon, I also got an emergency phone call from the county telling me about an issue. My question is about the concept of an emergency. Several years ago, not that many really, sometime around 5:00 in the morning, I got another emergency phone call from the city police. I'm half asleep. I stumble over to the phone. This is the police calling. What's going on? I try to talk to the phone. Who's hurt? What's going on? It's a recording. Okay, that's okay. Okay, that's okay. Maybe there's a flood. Maybe there's a fire. Maybe there's mayhem somewhere. No, it's a 14-year-old girl who's been missing since 7:00 the night before, 10 miles from my house. As a result of that, I tried to fix that. I said, you know, that's not really appropriate. And I did a lot of things that really went nowhere. The one thing I did ask, I asked my councilman for what's the definition of an emergency? Well, he's not my councilman anymore, but it was laloi. And I never did get an answer to that. But in looking at what's happening with this state of emergency in order to address issues with pedestrians, I don't really think that that's, I think it's cynical. I don't think it's appropriate. It's not the truth, okay? Yes, I'm a pedestrian. I walk all over this city. My avocation is hiking, and I ride a bike. And I can tell you, it's a lot worse riding a bike.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Welcome to come back. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So Mayor, we do have a special meeting agenda at 4:00 PM. It's a closed session for two items. First item is pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 to discuss matters pertaining to pending litigation, City of Sacramento versus 3M Company et al., U.S. District Court for District of South Carolina, MDL Number 2867, Master Docket Number 2:18-MN-2873. Second item is pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 for a matter pertaining to negotiations with unrepresented employees, the city auditor, and the purpose is to confer with the city's designated representative, Shelley Banks Robinson. You do have a quorum of counsel in chambers, and I have no public on this, comment on this item. You adjourn to closed session.
What was that docket number again?
Let me read that for you.
Ms. Dozier had one comment before we adjourned. Go ahead.
Yes, just one quick, one quick comment. I did get a question about the Prop One funds. There's approximately $6 billion in terms of bonds that were going to be released by the state. $4 billion will be competitive grants for behavioral health treatment, and $2 billion is for supportive housing. Half of that will be Home Key Plus, which really addresses permanent supportive housing for veterans. And the other billion dollar will be just regular PSH. So we are following this closely. We think that the NOFA will drop in November, and probably applications will be accepted in January. So we'll be following that.
Very good. Thank you so much. We are adjourned to closed session.